...town council special meeting to order October 4th at 5 o'clock. Welcome, let's stand to salute the flag.
The pledge allegiance to flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we have a motion to accept the call and warrant for a special town council meeting on October 4th, 2018, at 5 o'clock, and that the warrant be made part of the record of this meeting.
I'm over that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Point of order, on Monday night, this council voted four to zero to continue this agenda item until October 15th, a date certain.
I'm going to defer to the clerk, thank you Jill. Do you have, excuse me?
Till October 15th.
No, I think it was just to continue.
No, my recollection.
Patrick said table, and I'm saying no.
Right, so we say continue until the next meeting, October 15th, so I move for immediate adjournment.
So, we'll take a five-minute recess so we can review that, but...
Anybody got a pen? I don't have a pen. You got a pen? Alright, good. Yeah, I'll come get it.
So, we'll take a five-minute recess so we can review the tape and answer that accurately. Thank you.
Smoke them if you got them, it's gonna take awhile.
So, can we go down?
There are issues that I think still have to be resolved, as far as parking issues...
Sorry.
My partner and myself met with Mr. DeLuca this morning, and I think we had a fruitful meeting as the potential resolution of some of the access issues into the property. It has been an ongoing problem with parking over a long period of time, and someone brought to my attention, "You've allowed this to happen for 30 years." Yes, we have, but it is something that cannot continue. My fear is that this parking lot will turn into a public beach parking lot during the summertime. Now, the suggestion that I should have to put something or someone on my property to make sure that people are not parking there, I think is a little excessive. We are making leases for people in the building, that that is their right to park there 24/7. We have had people towed, and we will continue to do it. We would prefer not to do it, but as I said, the access into that parking lot has changed. If someone were to sit in that parking lot on the weekend, you will see people come in from Castle Street and Narragansett Avenue, cut directly across that parking lot at a high rate of speed, and end up coming out where Trio is. So, that it really does pose, I think, a problem as far as a safety issue, especially if we're having a library where there are going to be kids around. I think the idea of slowing the traffic down is something that should be addressed. Now, I may be able to be taken to task for this, but I am going to say that I have, as a property owner and as an abutter, nowhere in this development have myself or my partner been approached for input. Now, people may say there have been public hearings that I could attend. I am an abutting property owner. I am not someone that lives in the North End that is making suggestions as far as the scope of the building, and that I think it was an oversight not to include us into some of the developments that are going on, and some of the restrictions I think that have to happen.
Time's running out.
I would like not to be here, but I think it's necessary that I do. And I would like to thank Mr. DeLuca for extending to us the meeting this morning to see if we can get this resolved.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak?
Catherine Celiberto, 48 hours court. I object to this meeting going forward because of the time. Most of the people, most of the people in this town who are employed could never make it here for 5 o'clock, and tonight you're proposing to have a first reading of an ordinance, and that's the only time the general public can speak. I just think you've excluded thousands of people that should be able to be included if they chose to. 5 o'clock was not the right time, and I think if you want to have a reschedule for the next two days, fine, you have 48 hours, but make it at 7:30 so that people can show up if they want to. Thanks.
Thank you. Karen.
Karen Shabshado, Wanda Street. I think this has been dragged out much too long. It's costing the town more money, and there have been all these smokescreens thrown in the way of people that work on a committee very passionately and do all our homework, as opposed to some people who seem to drag these ideas about democracy out of the clouds, and they're black clouds. I mean, can you even imagine people objecting to moving it to the high school auditorium so more people can come? It just doesn't even make sense that they'd rather have limited participation by letting people stand outside waiting to come in. And as a member of the trustees, I feel very insulted and very, like, betrayed by members of the town council that seem to throw every smokescreen they can possibly think of, call its names, say we're a special interest group and we're trying to build the Taj Mahal. I would say that I question whether they do their homework, and have, we've had plenty of meetings which have been advertised, we don't do things behind closed doors, as we've been accused of, we are not the worst committee that Council Manic said he has ever worked with. It's unbelievable the way they treat members of the public, and that he'd rather go and see people in the beach and in the market rather than the town hall, people that come up and speak. This is the way of democracy, you come up and approach the town council. You don't go, because they're not saying what you agree with, over to the beach and the market to conduct your democratic business. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Anybody else wishing to speak? Stanley.
Stan Wojcowski, Narragansett. I just want a clarification, because I heard Councilwoman Lawler mention about this, I thought this was continued to the next meeting, and now it's this meeting. Was there a reason for it?
We didn't continue to a certain date, so we didn't say to the 15th, we just said to continue, so we didn't determine the date.
It wasn't specifically said to the next council meeting?
That's right.
We just listened to the tape, I was incorrect. Yeah, I had thought, I just probably just because you would assume that you have another meeting October 15th, that this motion would just be moved to that.
That's what I thought. Did it say the next meeting?
Stanley, you're supposed to address your comments to me.
I'm sorry, yeah, I just assumed it was to the next council meeting, and I thought that was a normal meeting.
Should have been.
That's all, so I was confused.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak?
Peter Lodge, 4 Pendleton Place, Narragansett. I am the owner of a budding property to this development. There are issues that I think still have to be resolved, as far as parking issues...
Somebody's speaking at the podium. Sorry. Thank you.
As far as access issues, liability issues, parking issues, and safety issues. My partner and myself met with Mr. DeLuca this morning, and I think we had a fruitful meeting as the potential resolution of some of the access issues into the property. It has been an ongoing problem with parking over a long period of time, and someone brought to my attention, "You've allowed this to happen for 30 years." Yes, we have, but it is something that cannot continue. My fear is that this parking lot will turn into a public beach parking lot during the summertime. Now, the suggestion that I should have to put something or someone on my property to make sure that people are not parking there, I think is a little excessive. We are making leases for people in the building, that that is their right to park there 24/7. We have had people towed, and we will continue to do it. We would prefer not to do it, but as I said, the access into that parking lot has changed. If someone were to sit in that parking lot on the weekend, you will see people come in from Castle Street and Narragansett Avenue, cut directly across that parking lot at a high rate of speed, and end up coming out where Trio is. So, that it really does pose, I think, a problem as far as a safety issue, especially if we're having a library where there are going to be kids around. I think the idea of slowing the traffic down is something that should be addressed. Now, I may be able to be taken to task for this, but I am going to say that I have, as a property owner and as an abutter, nowhere in this development have myself or my partner been approached for input. Now, people may say there have been public hearings that I could attend. I am an abutting property owner. I am not someone that lives in the North End that is making suggestions as far as the scope of the building, and that I think it was an oversight not to include us into some of the developments that are going on, and some of the restrictions I think that have to happen.
Time's running out.
I would like not to be here, but I think it's necessary that I do. And I would like to thank Mr. DeLuca for extending to us the meeting this morning to see if we can get this resolved.
Thank you, Peter. Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak? Yeah, we're speaking on the motion that I read tonight on the subdivision. That's the motion, so let's follow the Roberts rules and speak to that motion, please. State your name and address, please.
Steven Ferandi, 44 Sylvin Road. I'd also like to speak up about the time limit that's been available to us only a couple of days.
So, Steven...
And I'd also like to speak up...
Speak to the motion.
Am I going to be able to speak, Susan?
Yeah, but to the motion.
Thank you.
Roberts rules, to the motion.
I'd also like to speak in lieu of these new developments that Mr. Lodge has just brought up, and hasn't been asked about anything about, as an abutter, that you wait and not do anything till you get these resolved, because whatever happens, if this goes through before the election, don't forget, the next council is going to have to deal with all the issues. Now, I know there's four people up there running. Mike, you're out for next time, so you won't have a say. So, I think in lieu of the new information that Mr. Lodge has brought up, that you hold off on this till you get that ironed out, because it's a complicated deal, that's all a lot of the people have been saying, and just do your diligence on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Anybody else wishing to speak? Mrs. Garceau.
Could you please address what you stated earlier, because I didn't hear what you addressed, what you mentioned?
So, right now, we're speaking on the motion of the subdivision, but we were reviewing the tape to see if we had determined a date to reconvene, and it was continued, but there was no date certain, so we were able to meet tonight to talk about it.
And Jill, there was an error on your part?
So, again, Mrs. Garceau, it's commentary, you have to address the cheer.
Okay. Could you please have her address that question for me?
Yes, I can. Ms. Lawler, if you want to reiterate.
First of all, welcome back. We haven't seen you in a long time.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes, you're correct. I went down to the town clerk's office, and she kindly ran the tape, and I was incorrect. I had thought, I had assumed, because we were talking about rescheduling, that we'd reschedule to the next meeting so that all five of us would be here. And, you know, Matt's not here, obviously, he couldn't make it tonight, because we found out about it very quickly. I wasn't called to find out whether or not I could be here, and I guess Matt can't, Town Manager's not even here, so...
Okay, thank you kindly for answering, I appreciate that. And thank you for addressing my question and my concern. I do have some other questions and some concerns pertaining to the calling of this meeting, okay, and how it was called, and how it wasn't written in the paper.
So...
And, wait, let me finish, please. Let me finish, please. There is a meeting here tonight...
Mrs. Garceau, there is a meeting, there is a motion.
And there's another meeting tonight with the planning board at 6 tonight, and you both have the same date pertaining for the subject, which goes back to the town council meetings, I believe. You both have on your paper, October 2nd, which reference another meeting. What meeting was that?
We're addressing this motion in front of us tonight, the motion that I just read. That's what you can come up for commentary on tonight.
But you didn't put anything in the paper. Do you call this a legal meeting without putting it in the paper for what the meeting was about? Was it appeared anywhere? I looked at 4 o'clock, I didn't see anything in the town council, on the, from the clerk's office, anything. The only thing I saw that there was a meeting tonight for you and the town, town planning board tonight at 6 to 9 for them, that's all I saw. What was the purpose of the meeting? Why wasn't that put in the paper?
So, Anne, could you address that as far as...
No, no, excuse me. When you put a meeting together, you have to have information pertaining what is the purpose of the meeting, et cetera, and record it properly. It wasn't done. Now, tonight, you have a meeting, and you have four people here, one person meeting, missing, okay? Another meeting held at the town council on the other night, Mr. Moretti was missing, and the other members agreed, and Mr. Murray brought up the fact that the two people that were against, that if they reschedule for another time, I'm not using the right words, you know, in other words, we'll go over it again, so that's what they do for another meeting. So, tonight, you've got four people here. The fifth person is, the other person is not here.
The three minutes is up, and I'm going to let the clerk answer the question as far as the meeting. Thank you, Mrs. Garceau.
Hi, Joan.
Hi, nice to see you.
The president called me and asked for me to prepare a call and a warrant. I prepared the call and the warrant for the introduce, read, pass, and accept, the exact same language that was on Monday, October 1st council meeting. It was posted at the library, it was posted at town hall, it was posted on our website, it was posted on the Secretary of State's website.
Thank you, Anne.
My question to you is...
Mrs. Garceau, you're three...
Excuse me!
No, excuse me, your three minutes is up.
No, let me address her, let me respond.
No, this is commentary, she just responded...
I know she did, but I'm...
It's not a back and forth, Mrs. Garceau.
I didn't see it.
It's not...
I didn't see it on the internet.
Well, she did it.
I didn't see it under Narragansett Town Council meeting.
The clerk gave you the answer.
Anywhere.
Thank you, Mrs. Garceau.
And that's where it belongs, at the, on your agenda for your meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anne, can I ask you a clarification on the Secretary of State website? Because I know that we've got 48 hours, which it was posted. I saw it, it was posted for the meeting, but when was the actual agenda item attached? Because when I first looked, it wasn't there. Do you remember when that was? Because that might be what she's looking for.
Pardon me. The agenda item is never attached on the Secretary of State's website. The agenda item is on the calendar page, I sent it to my deputy who has administrative rights for the website, and she posted it.
Okay, so at the time on our website that you posted, we had the meeting, you also put the agenda?
Correct.
Okay.
And the backup.
Thank you, Anne. Anybody else wishing to speak on the motion in front of us tonight? Jesse? Thank you, Anne, well done. Anne, I mean Jesse, I called Jesse, sorry, Mary? Everybody gets three minutes of commentary, okay? Three minutes, the clock is ticking.
Mary Wojcowski, Narragansett. I'm just concerned, is this a public hearing that we're supposed to be sworn in at all? And then, can we ask the clerk when this was posted?
The clerk just reviewed it.
She didn't tell us a date?
October 2nd, on the corner of the agenda?
I didn't see it.
Posted October 2nd.
Thank you, Anne. Thank you, Mary. Jesse? Anybody else wishing to speak on the motion? Not on the scheduling, on the motion in front of us tonight? Anybody from the public? Seeing none?
I have only three minutes. I have one more question.
Say again? It's not a question, Mary, you want to come up to the podium?
Mary Wojcowski again. Now, Mr. Moretti...
Correct.
Okay.
And the backup.
Thank you, Anne. Anybody else wishing to speak on the motion in front of us tonight? Jessie. Thank you, Anne. Well done. Anne, I mean Jessie, I called Jessie, sorry, Mary. Everybody gets three minutes of commentary, okay? Three minutes, the clock is ticking.
Mary Wojcowski, Narragansett. I'm just concerned, is this a public hearing that we're supposed to be sworn in at all? And then, can we ask the clerk when this was posted?
The clerk just reviewed it.
She didn't tell us a date.
October 2nd, on the corner of the agenda?
I, I didn't see it.
Posted October 2nd.
Thank you, Anne. Thank you, Mary. Jessie. Anybody else wishing to speak on the motion? Not on the scheduling, on the motion in front of us tonight. Anybody from the public? Seeing none. Say again? It's not a quest, Mary, you want to come up to the podium?
Mary Wojcowski, again. Now, Mr. Moretti wasn't at the Monday meeting, so was he involved with this meeting? Because he didn't attend the Monday meeting, and you weren't at the Monday meeting, oh, you were at the debate, that's something different, but you weren't at the Monday meeting, right? So, I don't think he gets involved with this.
Say that again, Mary.
Would he be involved with this meeting because he wasn't at the Monday meeting?
Yes, he can be at this meeting, even though he wasn't there at Monday.
I thought when somebody wasn't at a meeting, they have to abstain, whatever.
No, he, he can, he can participate.
Is that, can we ask the lawyer that question?
He can participate tonight.
Because in the past, sometimes, when they have other people that don't show up, then they can't.
The lawyer just responded, thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak? Seeing nine, no hands, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Three to one motion passes. Thank you, good evening.
Do you have to close it?
Oh, I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll move that motion, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Three to.
We can agree on that.
I mean, four to zero motion adjourned, meeting adjourned.